Okay, we'll call the panel Select Board to Order on Thursday, January 25th for a special meeting. Basic warrants be done, and then we're gonna work on the general budget and Select Board ballot articles for March. And we're reminded today at the expense for the town administrator and the funds on our agenda. Anything to be added?
Can't.
Yeah. Any public comments? Okay, then we'll go right into it. Warrants are somewhere around here. Okay. Counts payable ending 1/27/18 in the amount of $4,490.70. Counts payable ending 1/26/18 in the amount of $26,193.28. Blue Cross Blue Shield was $6,000 of that. Remount Power was $2,500. Salt was $4,000. Ten was $3,200. And then you've got Beamers, $29. And Barney Construction, $2185, that was gravel. And then, of course, the IRS, $2,800. For the big numbers.
Did you explain?
Was Sunny TV explaining the first one?
Yeah, did you ex- I was wondering if you explained more.
Well, do that in a minute. And payroll, ending 1/26/18 in the amount of $8,525.60. The one that they're looking to explain is the $4,490.70. This is our payment to the Hydro, Kusick River Hydro, which is our hydro project that went down in North Pownell. This is our share, what we have to pay for the use of their electricity. So you get the bill, and then it's less 5% incentive to Pownell.
And how often do we get that bill?
Monthly.
We're gonna be doing, we're gonna be making our payments to Kusick Hydro monthly in the same format.
This was for four months.
Yeah. Because the facility's been on and offline, and it was time to catch up.
So we should see one of them every month, at least, once a month. Okay. Anything else with the warrants, guys? All those, got any motion to accept them?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we're gonna move into the general budget and ballot articles. You should have a copy of the general budget in front of you. The date I have is 1/23/18. And what we're gonna work on, I know we've got a lot of different-
It has the initials in it, right?
It has her-
Yeah. I copied mine because I didn't know if others, if you were gonna bring them back.
Okay, gotcha.
No, but this is good. Then we're all on the same line.
It's 7:15 PM, is when she printed it.
Yep.
Got the right one.
Okay. We went down through this before on Tuesday. There was a couple of things that we wanted to make sure on. The changes have all been added to this, right? So we're all set?
Yeah, I checked it before we left Tuesday night.
Super.
One of them was the repeater system for the fire departments.
And the ballot articles.
Yes. And Craig O'Dell is here to speak on behalf of that, to explain it. I think we need to change the wording on it to, to something different than-
What's it say?
I don't know, I think, look how we wrote it.
Look at the ballot articles.
So which article was that?
That would have been...
It's called, she put it down, it's on page 7 of 7, "Emergency Repeater System" over the top.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe one. And I think that, that can be misleading. I think we need to maybe call it a "Communications Repeater System."
But it's emergency communication, right?
Well, it's communications for the fire department. It's not like an alert, like an emergency alert, where I think people, I don't want people to get confused, thinking it's an emergency alert system. It's an alert, it's, it's our radio communications for the two fire departments in town. It'd be a new frequency and-
Why don't we have you talk about it?
Sure.
And then we'll see what the proper wording would be.
How we wanna put it on there.
And you only have that much space to work in?
Yeah.
Hmm?
There's only that much space to-
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure how much.
Oh, the right, yeah.
Two.
How much, you guys are familiar with it?
Very little.
Very little.
Very little.
Is it, is it like a computer system, or is it a machine?
No, it's a repeater system.
I know what a repeater system is and that part of it, but I'm ver- I'm not familiar at all with this, what you're trying to do here, who you're working with.
Several years ago, the FCC mandated that we go to low-band frequencies on our radios. Since then, we've had horrible time communicating portables, mobile radios, receiving alert tones when there was a fire. So we've been looking at different avenues to... Basically, nobody's receiving dispatches when we have calls.
So what you're trying to do is improve the signal?
Improve the signal.
So it gets out to better, some of the places that are sort of locked out at the moment?
Yeah. And communications.
Have you tested, brought it in, and you know-
We haven't actually, we've done offline testing, but now using a repeater.
Okay.
To see if it would work in the area that we chose to put it up. So preliminary, we're, we're looking at putting a tower, 49-foot tower at the Pownell Valley Center Station, with a 10-foot antenna on that. The repeater itself would be housed inside the, the fire station. Similar to what the Rescue Squad has at Scott Brothers, it's basically the same concept. The same company that installed the Rescue Squad repeaters, and what we hope would do, the fire department repeater, loss communications. And it would be able, it would allow us to receive and communicate back and forth with dispatch and other units, as well as receive the, the alert tones under the emergency.
Is this the fire service-only repeater? It's for the fire companies? Yes.
Not the rescue squad.
So, so maybe that's what it should-
Rescue Squad, we have our own.
But maybe that's what it should say. It should say "Fire Repeater System." Fire Service, maybe.
Okay.
Repeater System. So people know what this repeater's for, and where to, because yes, it's an emergency, but I get where you are, because we have other emergency services. So if we said fire repeater, uh, fire services repeaters, or fire department repeaters-
Fire Department.
Fire Department Communications.
Which is, which is what they're used to hearing here, is fire departments.
And a couple of things I think that are important, too, is grants have been applied for, and they're just simply, they don't, they don't do grants for communications, you know, they do grants for equipment.
Yeah, that's been a-
The other thing also, this location here has a generator, a-
Backup power.
A big backup power system to this building, so I mean, there's a number of benefits to having it, having it right here. Being, it's also the, you know, one of the higher parts of, parts of town, you know, to set up the tower.
Yeah, so basically, to explain the repeater system, basically what it does is just, you could be on a remote somewhere, and you'll trigger the repeater, and then the other remote can-
It entails a new frequency, too, which we've applied for already through the FCC.
They usually have a frequency that you're coming in with, and a frequency that's going out, so you're picking up two frequencies.
Correct.
So basically, yeah, and that's why I asked about the site in town. If you've done some preliminary already, checking to make sure you can reach these spots where you can't now.
We did some last year, when we originally discussed putting repeater up, and then we did some testing again Monday night.
Okay, good. Reason why I asked that is if you remember when the cell towers were coming here, they came in with their lift trucks, rain balloons, they also lifted up the truck and would put up an antenna and do a preliminary test, make sure it works, and then they'd, of course, that's when they wanted the church and a bunch of other places, so, good.
It's a one-time, it's a one-time-
One-time deal.
Deal. It'll be on the ballot for, for just this year. It's not, so it would be purchasing the tower and-
The repeater itself.
The repeater and everything.
And the other question is, we have a designated phone line right now that we pay for, for the-
You would still need that.
We would still need that, okay.
So the designated phone line would be for the page.
Yeah, that's the only other we left.
So what we hope to do is eliminate some errors with the Bennington Police Department when they dispatch us. Right now, they have to dial in a phone number, push a series of codes, and then give them a message. At this time, with the repeater, it would be simply, they'd push a button like they do for everybody else, and give the message.
Yeah.
So it's gonna make that, their lives a lot easier.
Yeah.
The problem is, they can't hear us. So if we have a call, we get sent out for a fire, most of the time, our radios won't come back to them. So they'll continue to page us, because they're not hearing us respond.
And this will improve on that?
Yes.
Who dispatches you?
Bennington Police Department.
Okay.
So, but, but if I understand correctly, tower, repeater, all installation costs, all radio modification?
Mm-hmm.
So this will be complete for what is being requested?
Yes.
Here.
Okay.
Just, I'm sure that the people there on the floor to answer that.
And you guys will be at the-
Maintenance and upkeep is minimal.
Okay.
So.
You guys will be at town meeting anyway, in case people have questions, so you can explain it to the public.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I have no problem with that. I just, I agree with, initially, I was thinking emergency services in my head, but you're right, we have more than one.
Right.
So let's make it clear that it's for all the fire departments to use.
Right.
Yeah. So we need to word it.
I think, I think the big selling point, too, is the Rescue Squad's had one for, for probably 10 years now, and it's worked very, very well.
The main thing we've had trouble is changing the batteries every now and then.
Right.
But it'll be ma- better communication between the two of them when they got a call.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Anybody see anything negative about running this as a ballot article, or you're all on the same page here?
I think, I don't know if Ronnie was here before, but didn't we, didn't we, we were gonna have it as three separate articles, 'cause the fire department was gonna do one?
No.
No?
What was proposed initially was that each fire department would put in some money, and then they were gonna ask for a lesser amount from the town.
Okay.
So where you'd have three separate votes going on, and we suggested combining it all, let people know what it's for, and put the article out there, so they know it's, it's basically for emergency services, so people can respond to their house if it's on fire quicker, which is what you want.
And make it one article.
Yeah. So you had a question about our dispatching services.
Mm-hmm.
This is, we pay, we pay for that service $2,400 a year, and there's $800 is budgeted for that phone line that we talked about there.
Okay. And that includes Rescue Squad and fire?
Yes.
Dispatch.
The dispatch, right.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that, you know, that's, that's been here every year, and it's been no problem. The new thing will be this year, and we just need to make sure that we understand what it is, and be able to explain the need.
Do you come up with any wording?
I was just gonna say, what's the wording?
Are we even doing our own, or?
What's the wording on it?
Well, I think it's gotta have something to say, "Fire Department Repeater System," or something of that nature.
Communications Repeater. Fire Department Communications Repeater.
Yeah.
Perfect.
We got enough room for that, Linda?
Fire Department Communication Repeater.
Again, you know, I think there's enough, the Rescue Squad has it, works real well, and, and what's happened is all the, a lot of the other towns around us have all done the same thing, where we all used to share one frequency. It's, you know, like I said, you can go around and see that most towns have swapped to their own frequency, you know, and gone the repeater.
Well, again, the-
And how much is the, how much is the amount?
And this article will be for $20,000. One time, it'll be there this year, then you won't see it next year.
Okay.
Mainly for the structure, right?
Excuse me?
Mainly for the structure, right?
Uh, for the, the tower and-
It's a complete unit when it's done.
Yeah. repeater system, installation.
Yeah. There's some labor involved with, with reprogramming all of our equipment we have right now, radios, pagers, and there's, there's considerable amount of labor involved there.
Yeah.
The tower itself, I think we're gonna do our own work, the old excavation work we'll do ourselves.
Yeah.
We'll pour our own pad, concrete pad, and then they'll just build onto it from there.
Yep. So you could use, for example, "Shall the town of Pownell vote to appropriate 20, the amount of $20,000 for a fire department repeater system?" And you could add to enhance-
Communications.
Communications. Which will enhance-
Public safety.
Yep. Enhance response time. It's a two-way. Any more questions on that one, guys? We're all set with that? We'll look at the rest of this.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks. Very helpful.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The other thing that wasn't on here that we talked about was the administrator expense line, uh, that we're talking about at this time, and that would probably be under- and payroll. Oh, yeah, our payroll.
Where you just-
Yeah, well, you could go with a selectman and an administrative assistant. I would say we're probably gonna put this underneath the, just like they did their total selectmen, we'll have a, an administrative line. That's what I'm seeing.
What page are you on?
I'm on page two.
H2.
If you look, you got, you start off at 130, and you say "Selectmen" in your list there, then you've got administrative assistant and their wages.
Mm-hmm.
And then you've got the total administrative assistant wages, and, interesting. And selectmen expenses and totals. There's the total. I'm just looking at the line, the total administrative assistant wages, Linda.
Mm-hmm.
And that doesn't include the selectmen, right? Paid, it's on that same.
Um...
I'm just wanting to-
I'm looking to see how that runs.
'Cause she goes down the 3,000 line, but she's got a 390 line, so I'm assuming that's-
Yeah, I see that. It starts with my wages, it stops, and then it continues to add the select board wages, TV, and the postage for the total, okay?
Okay.
So it goes to 58. It goes from 45.
Okay.
So it does continue to add in.
Oh, yeah. Yep. If you add those together, comes to the-
Yep.
Okay.
So I guess it gives a subtotal. It gives a subtotal, then a total.
Yeah, so what we would do is create another one that would've said, "Administrator wages," and-
And then it'll have a subtotal.
And then it'll be a subtotal. And at this point, I would say, what, what is the wage that you would wish to put on that line, guys?
Well, we haven't decided full or part-time, so we should, and we're not gonna decide that until we interview and see who we get for ca- what we get for candidates and everything, so we need to come up with some kind of figure that seems, doesn't mean we have to use it
Well, where do we go, administrative 45?
I think I have.
There was something they sent you with, what was averages?
I had, I did have a sheet on what other towns were paying.
They give you hours, okay, hours. 24 hours. All right, for 24 hours, 37 hours, 30 hours, population.
Now, when you have to kinda determine whether it's gonna be full-time or part-time.
That's what I just said.
Yeah, and, uh-
And we won't know that until we interview and see what we have.
See what the lowest. The low on this is 22,008.
The town of Vernon that we did our job description?
Those were salaries, but then there was the total package, you know, there was the-
Yep, that's the-
Benefits.
Suppose 22, I'm looking for the, the ones that posted 30 hours, the similar to the next 35. Yes, somewhere in the 30s. Unless you wanna go to towns that are very large, much larger than ours, then they pay $8,000. We're not that big. We're not by 1,000.
Is the town of Vernon on there?
It wasn't.
Is it Vernon?
It's not on there.
No.
I see that Reedsboro's going even higher. Is that for the assistant?
Well, the one, one I'm looking at here is Bristol Town, 3,900 people. Now, that one there is 40 hour a week, and that's 71,000. So there's Charlotte, 63 at 3,800. East Mountpelier is 72. Farley, which has a, a little over 1,000 people, is 32.
Is Chastigar in there?
No.
Stanford?
No. Then, on this list, it'd be nice to know what the-
Hmm.
Chastigar, so, tell us, we can get what the hell it is. And again, it's our, it's our call, folks, so-
And again, those are, that's just salary, that's not, that's not with benefits, right?
Says annual salary on here, doesn't say anything else. Doesn't say anything about benefi- benefits, period. The average is 52 out of these, this list they gave you. The average part-time is 32, which is, I was- I would recommend that if you're gonna put something on a line for this, that you put 30 to 35,000, and that's it. Because then at that point, if you do part-time, then you can do benefits out of that. When you talk to somebody, if it runs a little over that, then you can, you'll have to deal with it, out of whatever you do for undesigned funds at the end, and make it up. But I wouldn't-
Seems low.
You know, well, I think this is the beginning. I think we wanna interview people and so forth. If it turns out to be super low when we're interviewing somebody, and we find it out, then we have to bite the bullet and do what we have to do. Come on, we, wouldn't be the first time we've overspent something. Now, if you think for sure that you're gonna overspend that amount, then tell me what you wanna write there. I'm thinking of a part-time, I, I sort of, my gut, and you guys can correct, is that I feel we should be bringing somebody in on a part-time basis, see how it works out.
Mm-hmm.
With letting the person know that's what we're doing, if they're looking for something more than that part-time, and then grow on there, which gives us another year to, to change that line. I think by us still working on job descriptions and trying to feel what this really means, to come up with some salary, they're gonna have somebody come in here and not necessarily meet our needs, but drive us in what direction we don't know. I think we're better off-
In this-
Taking small steps here, guys.
The budget we're working on now will be again July 1.
Yep.
And if we hire somebody before that, we're gonna have to come up with some money to pay them anyway.
That's right. So, yep, yeah, so really, you're probably gonna, well-
And my thought, my thought was that if we were to hire someone, it would seem to be, they would be real busy from the start, helping us get up to date with our policies, procedures, getting up to date on, you know, on, on things like that. And then, once we kinda get into a rhythm, and maybe cut back. I, that was my thought originally, but-
We may not find anybody that wants to work for what we have to pay.
Uh, yeah. What do you think, Bruce?
I don't know, I think we oughta start off with part-time, and you can think about what you're gonna do with the help you got here.
It all has to merge. It all has to work.
They all gotta work together somehow.
Yep.
I just don't like the idea of getting rid of anybody. That's where I'm coming from.
Nobody's ever talked about that.
Nobody's said that, Bruce.
I'm just saying, my feeling, that's all.
Yeah. I don't think we're, we're looking, nobody's said that we're gonna get rid of-
No, I, I know what you mean, but I'm just trying to get my feeling out there ahead of time.
Yeah, what we've talked about is, is duties could change, maybe, or hopefully, sharing us some duties could, could happen, so people aren't swamped. It's, it's making things work smoother in the office. We know we have problems in this office all the time. At the moment, we can't even keep help, by the way, looking around here, worrying about, trying to get rid of somebody. We don't have to worry about that. They're not as stinging as it is. So, I think, uh-
And our administrator doesn't have the time to do the research that we need to help us make the decisions we need to make, so that would help Linda, too.
Yeah. Well, I, I think another body with some knowledge of what goes on is only helpful at this time, because of where we are. We're growing, we're not necessarily growing outside the town, you know, buildings and industry and stuff, but we're growing in the requirements that are required of us by the state and others, that we have to meet various needs. And the only way we're gonna do that is with somebody that has the knowledge and is able to process it quickly. So, I'm, I'm still recommending that we put a line in, and 35,000, that's where I'm at. I think that'll cover both, some medical and part-time help. If it doesn't, then we'll have to bite the bullet and do the difference.
Well, if it's part-time help, it wouldn't be any medical, right?
Shouldn't be. Again, it's all part of the job description, when you get through interviewing, and what you're doing. Some people might say, "Hey, yeah, I'm looking for a job where I get medical, and I don't care about my pay. I'll give you 40 hours, and I'll do it for a little or nothing." Because medical is the big cost these days for everybody.
I'm okay with 35.
You okay with that, Bruce?
Yep.
About you, Ronnie, what do you think?
Well, I mean, so what, so in other words, we're adding a person, you say we're not getting rid of anybody. So, we're got, we've already have administrative assistants, far as I'm concerned, and if we're gonna have, we're gonna bring in somebody new, we ain't talked to anybody yet, found out anything, and we're gonna, what are we gonna do with the person we have now? People don't like taking big demotions. I don't think anybody in this room wants to take a cut. I don't even wanna take a cut, it's only 1,500, you know? I don't even wanna take a cut.
You already got a raise.
We make that much?
Yeah, we make 1,500 a year. They gave us $300 more here a few years back, gave us a heck of a wait. It's not, it's not so much that we're gonna cut anybody or take demotions, I don't think that's the thing to do. I think what we need to do is, there's gotta be a stabilization for a period. Come on, Linda's even asked us for help over time.
That I can understand, but if you're, this is the point I got. Of course, maybe I, I think in a small circle, or whatever, but if a person has been working right along for, what, $30,000, and we're gonna hire somebody to come in and wash you around, and start them off at 35, that would be a slap in the face to me, if you were gonna say, "Well, look, we're gonna, we're, we're, we'll break this up." I don't, I don't think one, one person that can, unless they put full-time into this thing, I don't think they can, they could possibly do it, in, in, for, you know, for that, for that money. If you're working full-time for that money, you really don't have an awful lot of qualifications. There's people that work hourly that are making more money than that. We got a sewer plant operator makes more money than that. We know, we got some people that make decent, decent pay, and, but what I'm trying to say is, I wanna, we, we got a very, and not a very harmonious thing going on here now. And we, we, we can, we can start any, any figure we want, we get, get, talk to somebody, And we, we, uh, we can, we can start any, any figure we want, we get, get, talk to somebody, get them in here, that's fine. But we're gonna have to lay it on the line and they're gonna have to. We're gonna have to be truthful and they're gonna have to be truthful. That's what makes this thing work. If you know, if you're not gonna, be, if you're gonna be doing things, well, this one's better than that one, this one's worse than that one, this and that, come on. We can't, uh, we've got a small office here, everybody has to do a job, you just said you can't keep helping here already.
We know it.
Are we gonna work on getting rid of everybody else or, you know, and, uh, to me, I'm, I'm going on a rant here, but still in all, I don't, I don't know where that number should be.
But, well, I don't.
I, I hate to even, uh, even mention that number, because to me, if we got, if we had some, you know, if we got an extraordinary person. And there's some out there, there's extraordinary people, if you got an extraordinary person, come in here, he or she, whatever, doesn't make no difference, could make this thing. Turn into a, a well-oiled machine and do all the research we want. You know, we, we also gotta feel a little responsibility, cause we are the five people that are, you know, supposedly.
We're ultimately the responsible.
We're the ones that these things are gonna be bounced off from.
Guaranteed.
We're gonna get the rap if we, if we do a good job, and we're gonna get the rap if we do a bad job. That, you know, it's all gonna come down, well, hey, you guys, you wanted this, you wanted that. So, uh, I really don't, don't know what to say on that thing, but I, I, I am, I know that nobody is happy to be demoted. And, uh, and, uh, things like that, and if we could get it, work out of something, which we haven't even spoke about how much duties.
Right.
This person's gonna be doing, amongst ourselves even.
Right.
I'd hate to have, if somebody comes in here and say, hey, look, you're gonna work on this or that, that's what I'd like to be able to say. Not, you know, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna save us from, from disaster, that ain't gonna happen.
No, no.
But I think that will happen, Ronnie, when we, when we interview people and we decide what we're gonna do. But the only reason it's coming up now is because we have to have some money in our budget, otherwise we can't hire somebody and bring somebody in and say, oh, we don't have any money to pay you.
Well, I, I'm.
And because we're doing much budget now for next year, we just have to have a figure to put in, I think.
Well, and the other thing is, if you look at Shasbury.
We will have a bigger discussion.
They seem to have a very qualified person, and it didn't cost them a whole lot of money. It, it, we don't know who's gonna apply, we really don't.
How much it cost them. And we know that if we were lucky enough to get somebody the same, same way, somebody who was semi-retired, had a lot of knowledge.
Has a good pension.
A savior, a volunteer, like they have at hospitals and everything else, these people that do things for almost nothing. Which is, they're very rare, they happened to get it, and the guy was very impressive when he talked in here. And other people that have came in here and talked about different things, they're, that other towns have, they are very impressive. But they love their job.
Oh.
See? And I don't know, maybe it's because, maybe Shasbury can work with them a little better and they can work with us. I don't know what the story is.
Well, they've been through, through a few, uh.
Well, we've never had one, I mean, Shasbury's had one.
They've been through a few administrators in the last few years.
Yeah, well, for years, we didn't have any, first of all, this town was, was a one-horse town. Let's, let's face it. Before the sewer and all that stuff, there was nothing in this town, nothing. That was a big deal, and actually, I'm very proud of Linda's work on doing, on working with that. She did very well, we didn't, all of it didn't tip over and go down into the soil. You know, things went along, I know Forester Knowledgers did a good job of engineering and bringing, helping us through it and things like that, I realize that. But we also had the people in the office to transfer this into, into getting it done, without getting in trouble. I don't think we're in, in trouble with that.
No, no.
So.
We met the federal requirements and you can't get much tougher than they are.
That's, that's right, so I mean, I'm, I'm really in a quandary, I'd have to listen to a lot more. If you wanna name a figure, you, you already got three or four people that, that agree with that, that's enough, you don't need, need me to throw in it, yeah, yeah, I'll go with that, I don't know what it is.
I don't know what it is.
Maybe I'd like to go more, but I don't know.
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead.
I, I think we can sit here for two hours and debate and talk about advantages. We've, you know, two years ago, we sat down at the school, we had a professional come in and talk to us. We've interviewed other, um, administrators, we know the benefits. Okay, I mean, we know what we have does not work, not the building, not our procedures, I mean, not our grant programs, but we are just, we're broken. We've been spinning backwards, Ronnie, for how long, how long are we gonna do that? I mean, at some point, you gotta move forward, we know that a five-person board here, I don't care who it is. You can't run this town with a five-person board anymore, it doesn't work. You need a professional person in this office that can run, that is, that does, is a manager, a real manager, I think you gotta have that. Otherwise, you know what, we're gonna just keep sitting here spinning our tires in the mud.
And we've gotta have somebody go after our grant money and, and we do these projects for the roads and we spend the roads, and then we don't even know if we got our grant money in, somebody's gotta go. Chase that down and say, hey, did you pay us the hundred thousand dollars you owe us for the grant that we just did on Mont Anthony Road or whatever it is? I mean, there's a lot of work to run in this town.
I have a question. Just, cause I'm just listening and I'm, I don't know, like, all the details, cause you guys have your meetings every week. So, you're trying to get an administrative person to help out, like you're saying, with following the grants, is it? You're, are you the administrative person, assistant there?
Assistant to the select board.
Okay, but, but if Linda was doing stuff, wouldn't it be just hiring somebody part-time to help Linda, I mean, she's been here forever?
No, we voted to hire a town administrator, like the other towns.
You guys did?
The taxpayers.
Tax, oh, I was on the.
It was a ballot article.
It was a ballot article.
Yeah, and that, that's really what's been driving us, is that.
But why couldn't it be somebody like Linda, somebody we already have?
She could apply.
Okay.
Nobody's saying that she can't apply for that position.
So she can apply for the position and then somebody could fill her physician, like, part-time, right?
Yeah, so you haven't, you haven't done the job description yet.
No.
No.
See, that, there's, there's steps that we've been working on and there's steps that we're getting close to finishing. Which is a job description, advertisement, interviewing people that are doing town administrative type jobs today. Which will basically educate us more into what that is also, even though we had some people came in and talked to us and told us. But that's really what we're looking at, because what we keep hearing is what Jason just said. Well, why aren't you doing this, or why aren't you doing that? Where's this? Uh, why are we having a problem with that? And what we're trying to do is really get someone that's a, a good coordinator or manager, basically a manager, that says, you know, this person's working on this, here's where it is. And if you look at the Shasbury meeting on YouTube or something, you'll see where they hired one. I think this is the third one they've gone through since they started this many years ago. And, uh, you'll see what we're talking about, that's the sort of thing we're trying to reach.
And they will oversee the, the rogue, um, foreman and different things, it's not just administrative work, it would be oversee different departments.
So this person would be head of all the other departments, or you're saying?
We're, we're ultimately responsible.
This person reports to us.
They would report to us, but they would be talking to those people when there's something that comes up, and they would come back and give us a weekly report.
They would handle human resource and make sure that people got their benefits and.
You guys and networking and getting out.
There's basically, there's two forms, there's a town administrator form and there's a town manager.
Oh, okay.
We can't do a town manager because we're not a charter.
Right, okay.
Yeah, you'd have to charter.
We'd have to try and change it.
But by state statute, we can do a town administrator.
But think of it like a business that has a board of directors. Then usually they'll have a C, CEO or somebody that's manning the various departments, and then you'll have the departments underneath it. That's the sort of structure we're looking at.
And have you worked with other towns to see, like towns that you know where things work, have you?
Yes.
Kinda like looked at a mentoring program, cause we, we've done that with, um, like live, live music venues, where I worked in Hartford. And Polaris, which is in Columbus, they were doing things correctly, so they say, but their people, like their ops guy, their assistant GM, they came and like kinda helped us. But then we also said, well, you know, we've got different problems, so we kinda went through, and we're kinda like a mentoring thing to try and.
Yeah, we, we had a person come down and speak to the town who was actually a head of a association that goes out and does that. For town administrators and, and managers and stuff. Uh, and he, he is more than willing to come back and help anytime we need that. Uh, he gave us a lot of ideas and thoughts on that. Uh, but then we've also talked to some towns administrators specifically that are in towns, like Shasbury and stuff. So that's where we are, we've sort of done some research.
Right. The Human Resource Director of Vermont Leads the Cities and Towns sent us many job applica-, um, job descriptions to the towns. And the town of Vernon, Vermont is now just hired somebody recently, and we're talking to them about their process and how they went through it, and different towns like that.
So, so.
And we've talked to Shasbury and.
And this has been ongoing for years now.
Yes.
That we've talked about this.
Yes.
But the vote was just recently, the vote to have it, uh, the Planning Commission actually has it in a town plan to do this as well. There's, there's a bunch of, a bunch of talk in the community and a, a bunch of looking for action to have this happen. So, and that's what we're trying to do, is address what the people feel is a need, what we feel is a need. And, uh, try to find a way to better run the town. So it costs less for the taxpayers, hopefully.
I'm, I'm with those two, but hopefully it's not gonna cut somebody out of a job that has been here.
No. No, I think there's a need, I have it along, I think there's enough work.
I think there's plenty of work.
I think there's enough work, that it's not. Not where you wanna cut staff, it's where you wanna bring staff in to improve. The overall workflow, so you can get more done. Not less, if, if you cut staff, you.
Right, now we're in need of auditors and listers, we haven't, we have nobody.
We don't need if anybody's running this year for, I think somebody might be running for the listers, but I haven't heard anything about auditors, and there's actually three seats on the listers, and I only heard it was one person running.
Are we, are we live tonight, or are we recorded?
We're live.
We're live. So basically.
If anybody wants to run, they can get a petition out this weekend and have it in by Monday.
Yeah, and basically, uh. That's, and if you look each year when we appoint people to a bunch of positions, whether it's, we got a DRB opening, we probably got, I don't know if there's any planning board at the moment. But basically, you look at that on our webpage where these positions are, and you'll see where some are vacant, empty. A lot of those are volunteer, I call them volunteer, even though some of them we might pay three hundred bucks a year for the travel type stuff, it's, but it's really volunteer. Uh, but our listers position are paid by the hour. And there's things that, there's both there, people look and see what's there.
Is there job descriptions for what, what, what each of those entails, too? Cause I would know what a lister does.
Listers, I would say.
That's cool, okay.
And I would say the best place to go is really on the web for the state listers. And see what's entailed in that. Uh, and work that way, we work with a numerous, our systems. And, uh, you'll see, uh, there's a learning phase, but we do pay for the learning phase when people go to those classes, we. We pay for whatever that course costs, so that people can learn and, and move forward with those things. Uh, but that's the sort of thing that, there was a time when it'd be multitude of competitions for select board seats or listers or any of these spots. But nowadays, it's a lot harder because of the way people have to work. A lot of people do two jobs, not just one, so when you ask for these volunteers, it's harder to find people out there. But we, uh, we as a town need that, but that also makes it much more difficult for people that are here working. You know, Linda has to try right now to deal with lister questions, town administrative type questions, and who knows what else that comes through the door? It, we really need to change that workflow.
And we need a new town attorney, we don't have a new town attorney.
Yeah, so, so there's a lot of things that are going on when it comes to, because of retiring. But basically, that's, that's where we're at. I think a, a good administrator that knows how to manage that part of the process of hiring, putting people in positions and interviewing and so forth, is a, is a strong thing, uh, that's needed. And it doesn't mean that they're gonna be a, to me, I don't know if that's a forty-hour-a-week job, certainly forever, for sure. But it's something we need at the moment.
If you had to summarize what the top five, um, things that the new town administrator would address, what would those top five issues be?
Well, one of them I just spoke about was organizing and getting things to run much more smoothly with the departments, uh.
Policies and procedures.
Our new, we, we need a new handbook.
Procedures, procedures, uh.
The human resource under it, um.
Certainly someone that could work with attorneys regularly.
Grants, grant writing and grant follow-up is a huge one.
There, there's probably more than five things, if we wanted to put our minds down thinking of what it might be. But then again, that's what we're working on is job description, and then I think we as a board need to prioritize what those five, top five might be. Based on what we know we're getting now and what we need. Uh, so yes, there's, there's some work yet to do to this, but at the same time, we understand there is a need for an administrator.
And then that's your benchmark, like these five things within three months or something, the cape building?
Yeah, well, what we'd like to do is see what that list is, prioritize, like you say, maybe the top five. And then when you're interviewing somebody, you can ask some questions about those things and how they might deliver those things. And when you're setting an interview process, you, you want to not only hear what the person has to offer, but you wanna tell them what you're looking for to see if he can offer what you need. And that's, that's the process we're in, so.
I can redo a little part of the position overview that we have as a draft of the job description. And they, it's to serve as the principal support for the panel of select board and, and be a liaison between the board and other involved parties. Work closely with the select board to manage the day-to-day administration of the town by providing administrative support. Advising on policy and decision-making, and presenting the board's decision to external audiences as necessary. To ensure effective town operations and communications among other departments, residents, and other interested parties. Through working closely with elected and appointed officials, town employees, regional, state, and federal. And they report to the select board.
Yeah, and, and in reality, the way I see that is, is that. It's actually providing directions for all of those at times. In other words, you're in charge, you're saying to them, look, this isn't being delivered at this time, and we need it to get done. So we can get this part of our department, the other department in line, so that we're not falling behind. We're not having attorneys write us letters, we're not having banks call us. You know, things of that nature, we really need somebody that's on top of all of it and is willing to take the charge, even though those people might not be directly underneath them. They've gotta, we've gotta have people that'll do that.
And compliance and things change, you're getting more and more.
All the time.
Well, the trouble, well, as you know, the.
Five years ago, you had three pieces of paper, now it's twelve.
Right.
I know, right?
Well, we were talking, we were putting this, but, the road budget together. With all these new regulations to do with water and runoff, you know, we have to budget differently.
We have to file a municipal permit next, starting next year.
And that's not because we.
Every year.
We made a change.
No, no.
It's because the demand's on us a little more.
Yep.
And that's all the more reason why you need staff that are fully. Involved with it, okay. But that's, that's, I hope I answered your question. Hey, so, uh, I'm hearing thirty-five's okay to go with, and I'm just saying that that's the only line should say, uh, you know, basically a town administrator. Wages and et cetera, is what I would do and say thirty-five thousand. And then we'll go from there, when, when the time comes, well, next year we'll have to fine-tune that and put it in different lines.
Okay.
And it might be more.
Okay.
I'm just thinking.
I don't think it's enough.
I don't either, no way.
No, probably isn't.
I didn't even gonna scare people.
If you even do, like, somebody that's like twenty dollars an hour for forty hours a week, fifty-two weeks, that's forty-one thousand six hundred.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be a full-time position.
Right.
I think we're looking fifty thousand dollars.
Well, I'm asking you guys, you want fifty, I'll put fifty down. You just gotta be willing to stand up and say why.
If you do that that way, then people understand hourly wage at forty hours a week.
Yeah, people are gonna say, what are you gonna do with thirty-five thousand? I, I don't, I'll agree with fifty, I don't know about the rest of the board.
Well, I'm okay, with it, your administrative assistant is just at forty-five something right now.
And I don't make what a rogue crew member makes.
That's right. So, so you're looking at.
Our administrative assistant is at forty-five right now?
With all her bennies with.
With the bennies.
Okay, so, so you.
No, I think it's gonna be at least fifty-five to start with.
I'm just, we need a number there.
There's a payroll clerk in there, that's not part of me.
Yeah.
There might be a couple other things.
So let's, here's where we're at. We need to start with something. And if you don't think thirty-five is high enough and you want fifty, then let's put fifty in there, it's just that when we're on the floor and the question comes up, be ready to answer it.
I think we can answer it just like we just did.
Uh, that's fine with me. Now, I didn't do any math to say, hey, you're right, fifteen, fifteen dollars an hour is thirty-seven thousand a year. And that's gonna be minimum wage pretty soon. So, yes. Hey, so what is it you want, guys? She's waiting to write a number down.
I'd move to go with fifty thousand.
Get a second to that? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Nays?
I don't care, because we gotta interview people, we gotta see anybody's, what they're gonna do.
We're only voting to put money into the budget, that's all.
That's right, if I asked the guy that came down and talked about the town administrators and the town managers, I says, we got a right to get rid of you.
Yes, we do.
And that's all I care about.
Yeah, we do.
The guy don't perform, but everybody thinks we got Jesus coming.
No.
Maybe we don't.
No, maybe we don't.
We might have the devil coming.
Might, he might be our moth, he or she, he or she.
That's right, he or she, it doesn't, I ain't saying who it is.
Yeah.
And he's not saying that the devil's a he.
I think he might be.
And it may be hard to find somebody, but we don't know, this is our first go-round. I mean, we've been trying to do this for years, and I, I have been, um, helping out, trying to get all this organized, and I know how much work it is.
They all said aye.
Just this one project, never mind everything that Linda and other people in the office have to do.
Okay. Okay, what else we gotta do to this tonight, guys, anything? Are you all set? I know we worked on it the other day, so.
Linda, was there anything that Ellen said that we missed or anything?
Well, we got the other ballot article that, uh, we have to agree on. To do with the town clerk's position. So the voters authorized the select board to appoint a town clerk as provided in seventeen BSA. Section twenty-six fifty-one, if you agree to that article, uh, we can put it in.
I make a motion to put it in as written by Garrett Baxter from Vermont Leads the Cities and Towns.
Okay.
We've checked and we've made sure.
Is she the attorney up there, or he?
He is the attorney, Linda checked with him. Linda checked with him and this is what he recommended.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstentions, nays?
Abstain.
That was the only person that we contacted to see for advice on this?
The lawyer?
I would, I would.
The Dorset clerk we also contacted and they had similar, but they didn't use the 17 BSA. They didn't do all the, they said to check with a lawyer, the Dorset clerk told us.
Well, see, that's what I'm, I kinda like to go that way rather than, than be, I'll tell you why. It's, I'm not easily convinced that lawyers know everything and I think that a person, because I really liked that town clerk from Dorset. Very, very, very intelligent and she trains a lot of people, Sandy. And I'm thinking that if anybody knows how that should be put out there, and I, and I am not, I'm not so sure our citizens will look at this and read it and say, well, yes, Vermont VSA, they gonna come up here and get that out? I doubt it. I'd rather have something they can just read and say, shall we?
Show the voters authorized the select board to appoint a town clerk.
We can take a copy of the statute with us to the town meeting.
What does the statute say?
The statute, I don't have a copy of it here in front of me.
Basically, basically the short of it is that the legislature passed.
Right here, it's right here.
Right here, it's here.
Want me to read it?
Sure, go ahead.
You wanna read it?
My throat's dry.
Title 17, Municipal Clerk Appointment or Removal. A, a municipality may vote at an annual meeting to authorize the legislative body to appoint the municipal clerk. A municipal clerk so appointed may be removed by the legislative body for just cause after notice and hearing. B, a vote to authorize the legislative body to appoint the municipal court shall remain in effect until rescinded by the majority vote of the legal voters present and voting at an annual or special meeting duly warned for that purpose. C, the term of office of a municipal court in the office of, on the date of municipality votes to allow the legislative body to appoint a municipal clerk shall expire 45 calendar days after the vote or on the date upon which the legislative body appoints a municipal court clerk under this section, whichever occurs first, unless a petition for reconsideration or rescission is filed in accordance with Section 2661 of this title. D, the authority to authorize the legislative body to appoint the municipal clerk as provided in this section shall extend to all municipalities except those that have a charter, which is the same as.
We don't have one, so.
That specifically provides for the election or appointment of the office of municipal clerk.
Because we get our clerk by us voting now.
You get it by voting.
And why do you feel, why do some of you feel strongly about?
I'll, I'll tell you, I'll tell you, because in the past, what has happened is there has been occurrences where we've had issues with getting things done and it's been made very clear to this board that as an elected official, we have no authority over them in doing anything. So if it was appointed by us, then they work for us.
And.
Instead of the voters.
Well.
No.
No, no.
You vote us in, you can vote us out.
It works for the voters, yeah. The town clerk in the past, most town clerks, and now the state of Vermont, almost everybody is going to this and we've talked about this many times.
But we, we know panel doesn't care with the rest of the money. We've learned that.
But we're trying to be consistent. But we've had a problem in the past where fees, the town clerk collected the fees, she got a stipend plus any fees, any recording fees and everything was all the town clerk's.
Had to manage all that.
The town clerk then had to take the state's money out of what she made and pay the state. We've had problems with that in the past. We want the fees to come to the town. The town will pay the state the fees that are owed and we will pay the town clerk a salary.
And there's a reason for that.
And it steps, it takes a step out.
Anything that isn't paid by the elected clerk becomes a responsibility of the town and the town taxpayers will pay, even if the clerk has collected the fees.
But is there, is there a way to fix that issue without changing the fact that it's an elected versus an appointed?
If you check with the Secretary of State, they'll tell you that the elected official is the elected official and the people of the town puts them in and takes them out.
That's right.
We have absolutely no control.
No control over it.
We have checked on it more than once when we ran into problems with elected officials.
And Sandy suggested this to us when she came down, that she's the clerk from Dorset. And she suggested to us that we do this.
Yeah, and Julie was here when that process was going on and felt it was.
But she ran for election and won. Sandy. She was not appointed.
No, she's appointed.
No. She ran for the job and won the election.
Right.
And she told me that herself. So you can say anything you want.
No, no.
But she told me right, right to my face.
And then she was hired afterwards.
Maybe she was hired afterwards. Maybe they changed their policy. I was just saying how it worked.
That's right.
No, I, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying I agree with you.
You weren't a minute ago.
No.
Why aren't I agreeing with you? I am agreeing with you.
Well, you said she wasn't elected. She was at one time.
This is the point, she was elected.
She was elected and then.
I've been in this town for probably longer than anybody else in here. Yeah, yeah.
Maybe him.
He's an old timer. The thing about it is, even years ago, we used to have road commissioners. We didn't have no road boss, we had road commissioners. They were elected. You know, people get sick of the roads being bad, they threw them out. Or they got sick of the taxes being too high, they threw them out. That's where, for the people, the citizens have a lot more power. Because all you need here is three people. You got three people, you got the majority out of a five-person board. I mean, I've, I've gave a lot of speeches on this board and nobody's ever listened to any of them. So that's, I know from that. I'm not so sure that the select board is the right way to go to put people in.
Well, I, I agree, I agree with you that three people have those decisions. I've sat on this board when three people have made a decision different than what I thought should be done, as same as you have and probably some of the rest of us. That, that's what the board is made up of, is the five people. And the reason is, is that basically years ago, they decided to vote in five, there used to be three, and they want to have as much input as possibly can and then a decision is made. And the decision will be made by the voters whether or not the clerk is appointed by us or elected. And at the same time, I believe there'll be somebody that'll be running to be elected and they'll probably be elected by the people of the town. But if this passes also at that point, this board then needs to make a decision. It might be the same decision that Dorset made.
Right.
Somebody ran and they appointed them. And that could happen here. The difference was that Dorset now pays their clerk a salary instead of them taking the fees and have to make sure that things are going correctly.
You can't institute that policy?
No, it has to be done by the voters.